April twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen, committee the whole. Number two, approval of agenda. Anybody care to move the approval of the agenda? Any additions?
So move.
I, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair. I did have a last minute addition up to you, whether you want to address it. At our last meeting, we had a question regarding the Courthouse Road. I received that letter requesting repairs on this road today.
Okay.
You haven't had the chance to see it. I don't, I don't think it's pressing, but it's entirely up to you whether you want to address that.
Yeah, we'll put it as what? Out of the business, seven F. So it's Courthouse Road.
And I believe that you may not, may not have seen it on your, on your online agenda. If you checked it earlier today, there is an in-camera item, very quick in-camera personnel matter, a very quick update.
Number twelve. All right, thank you. So having heard that, anybody care to, I guess, move the agenda as amended?
You did.
Okay. And seconded by?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Conflict of interest declaration. Anybody have a conflict of interest around the table? No, haven't heard none, we'll move on. We have no presentation. Number four, business arising from the minutes. We have an attachment, municipal building, but I think you've got that further down, CM use, or is that pressing?
Uh, the, I think I opened the wrong connect, uh, yeah, so business arising, there's an attachment of two pages. The, uh, the admin building is, is addressed.
Yeah.
Both of those are actually addressed in, in later on the agenda.
So number four is, I guess, for a administration building review, consultation feedback report, attachment with thirty-three pages. I think that one is yours, CM use, and probably also Mr. Fraughton.
Well, absolutely, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fraughton is the author of the, of the documents. You've had, you've had this document for quite some time, so just, you know, I'm really just going to hit the executive summary for you. The executive summary simply, well, the, the purpose of the document is simply to, to interpret the information that we've received and to provide that information to council. So the key findings that we received, or the, the key information we received during the consultation process of the admin building project is that, that there's a high percentage of the survey respondents, as well as the high percentage of, of those that were in the meetings, preferred to build new, and the overall consensus, anyway, so they were both consistent. The statistics are attached from the survey. It is essentially ninety percent of those that were, that chose to, to do the survey preferred a new building option. Some of the other findings inside of those discussions that we found quite insightful, you know, and, and it was very useful for us to hear. One is the, the importance of energy efficiency in a new construction. That was spoken in pretty much every meeting that we had hosted. Solar panels, wind turbine, geothermal, strongly recommended as, as, as things that we should be considering. And of course, a lot of our, our citizens were aware of the potential grant revenue that would come out of that if that, if that was a choice that, that council made. Uh, excuse me. So the other additional consultations were, was also a key finding. In other words, many residents said, look, we, we think, you know, it's a no-brainer. If you're gonna do something, don't, don't retrofit an old building, build a new building. However, we, it's difficult for a resident to support the new building without seeing a plan. So there was a real, uh, you know, there's a real focus on, okay, well, you know, we, we still want to be engaged in this process. It's, it doesn't end here, was what we heard from many citizens, and that makes a lot of sense if you're asking for support in some way and you're, you're not presenting, you're presenting a ghost of an idea. They would certainly, some residents expressed a keen interest in being involved in the planning of any new building so that they could, again, give us feedback. So, so of course, the matters for consideration that were discussed, many did not want us to hire a, an engineer. Some wanted us to hire an engineer but be sensible about it. Many, I just have, excuse me, heard too many stories about overly engineered buildings and had seen that happen, and so they, they wished, they wished for that not to happen in this case. So that was said across the board. Amalgamation was discussed. In, I tried to, I tried to frame the discussion of amalgamation around the decision for a building. The, the larger concept of amalgamation is really difficult to have that kind of discussion because we don't really have any information. We don't even, you know, like from, from, we don't, we haven't had discussions, any formal discussions in that respect. However, our residents wanted us to at least have considered the fact that if we're going to do something, we should think about the future, and one of the alternative futures might be amalgamation, you know, and that might be forced upon us. Whereas today, that's not the case. Tomorrow, we don't know. So, so they wanted us to, to, to have at least considered that potential future in this decision. So many, and, and we got mixed reviews on that. Many said, well, you shouldn't build at all until you know for sure. And others said, well, we'd rather you build because if you don't, then all of the services are, are surely going to leave our municipality. So there were varying levels of opinions that we heard on that, but that they really wanted us to, to have at least considered amalgamation in this decision. Capital project priority, the impact, so, so this was another concern, you know, how will the impact of this project, how will it impact other capital projects? So we tried to answer the questions as much as we could. And, and they did talk about the potential of having additional space for noncommu-, nonprofit use, or maybe small incubation for, for business, but not, not a huge, huge space. So I think that's really the summary. You've all had the chance to read the document. There are no recommendations. This is, we have brought the findings to you and hope that you would discuss them at this meeting and decide future steps now or into the future.
Okay, go ahead, Ward and Donaldson.
Uh, in the responses, did, did we take in consideration one of the meetings where we had a show of hands? Where there was a large number, you know?
Yeah.
Doesn't change anything, I don't think.
No, so that was the meeting in Wedgeport.
Yeah.
There was one of the meetings that there was a show of hands and, uh-
They asked for it.
And it was, is it in here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
I was looking at it here.
Oh, I missed it.
It, yeah, I don't recall where it is in the report, but Chris is saying it's there.
Yeah, I missed it, yeah.
It's in two point five in the section that it-
Page eight.
-summarizes Wedgeport meeting.
Ah, there, okay. Page eight.
Nine, maybe.
Yeah, there it is, right there, two point five.
And when, another question, if you can clear that for me. Did they say we shouldn't have hired an engineer or an architect?
Um, the-
Most of the architect, they did.
I think, I, I don't know that people, you know, were opposed to engaging an architect for the project necessarily. What they were opposed to was to have an architect engaged to overbuild, to, to, to do, to do something that is over and above what we would require. I mean, you know, we may require an architect on this particular project, but I think, you know, it was very clear that they did not want something overbuilt-
Of course.
-and, and over budget and-
That's right.
They wanted it to be for, for the community, not necessarily larger than the community.
That's right.
Yeah, but it, no, no talk on engineers. I mean, clearly, we need an engineer to, to engineer building.
Yeah.
So there's no talk about that.
Okay, Councilor Saret.
I would like, like to make a motion, if council is in agreement, and at least I can make the motion, that we move to the next, to the next step on this, on the administration building. And I, if I recall right, these meetings, it was, uh, the next step should be to make a, a design, or to engage a company, or, I forget who it is, but a company or engineer, but not engineer, but architect or somebody, to, to, to make a, a design of a building, you know, in the, in the next, I'm not gonna say so many months, but, and then to bring it forward so we can bring it to, to some other, to some meeting, to bring it to council, then to bring it to the people so they can have a look at what the design would look like. And that's, I don't know if there's anything I should add to that, but I guess to, I don't know if pricing should be in there? CAO muse, should, should also be pricing, or should be, should our next step be the design phase?
Um-
Or maybe I'm moving too fast.
Well, well, I, I think, I'm not sure that you, I, I'm not sure if I'm in the middle of a motion or not, but I don't, I just, 'cause you, like, so I, I think I'll try to clarify that and-
Okay, I won't make that motion, just hold on.
Yeah, it's okay. It's all right. I just didn't wanna talk to a motion that wasn't seconded. So, um, so the, the, if, if council is in agreement with the consultations, which is to support a new building, then, then, you know, what we heard from the community is that, is that, is a potential next step would be, okay, let's agree that that's the course of action we're gonna take, but we're not going to actually agree to build a building. We're going to, we're going to go to the next stage would be, which would be to develop a, a, a plan, a, a-
Design.
A design for a new building. So that would trigger, if, so that's a potential step. So what that step would, would mean to staff would be that we would not only have to look at design, we would also have to look at a location, because design and location could be influenced by each other. So, so, you know, so the, so if you're, if you're, I can sense you wanna make a motion, Councilor Saret, so it, so it's, you know, I guess the only advice I would have in terms of wording is that, is that, you know, perhaps we don't just say design, we say, you know, location and design, because they, they are together. And, and, and in terms of cost, well, you know, I think, you know, we, we don't, we're gonna have to go competitively for that. So, so rather than set a, rather than set a price, you could, you could set the process of an RFP, like a request for proposal. So that would trigger, that would trigger a competitive process, and we'd go get prices, and then at that point, council could decide, when it got the prices, whether or not it wished to proceed.
Right.
Okay, so you can always, you can always stop, even if you went to an RFP, you can always say, whoa, that's too expensive.
That's where you can move.
Right, exactly. So, so that's the potential courses of action. Obviously, you can do nothing.
Yeah.
You know, that's an option also, and, and defer, and, and certainly, that's entirely up to you, but I'm just trying to give you some context to-
Yeah, because maybe first of all, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the report as presented, except the report is presented to council, and that we move to the next step, which, which will be to, to make a design, to get a, a design plan and a location, and to bring back the council. Am I, am I clear or maybe not clear enough? Or should I add a couple of things there, or should I put RF, to a RFP? I'd rather not go into money, anything with, with money involved right at the moment. You do have a lot of work to do there.
I, if you, if you're asking my opinion-
I am asking your opinion, yeah.
I think, I think the first part is, is where you start, to accept the report. You might wanna just make that motion.
That's, that's what I'm-
And then, and then maybe we'll take the next step, 'cause accepting the report is probably the first, the first thing.
First thing. I mean, the motion that we accept the report as presented.
Okay, so moved.
I'll second there.
Okay, moved and seconded. Ward and Donaldson, you had your hand up for a second there.
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm not, I'm not sure now the motion's been made, but should we, should we have a committee, a building committee, look at this, or do we already have one? Or, or should we do it, the whole council? I don't know what the council of which. Doesn't matter, we can, we can port on the motion anyway, it doesn't change the motion to accept the report.
Correct. Maybe that's a question on a motion that could be coming.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll deal with this motion first, so you've heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Okay, so we got that one out of the way. Councilor Donaldson.
Just a question for Ellen. To your knowledge, is there any buildings that have been built in the province, or even new projects, I suppose, in the last ten years, moderate style, ministerial, rural municipal administration buildings, that their design would be what we were looking for? Should you be looking at that option first, and maybe even have a man or a road trip or two to check them out? 'Cause there could be potential big savings there, especially when it comes to architects. You're always gonna need a, a project manager, because whoever gets the contract, you want a project manager that's gonna make sure they use the proper materials and is built right and what, so, whatnot, so forth, but, so you will have that expense regardless, I think. But there may be, there may be a building already out there that's what we're looking for.
Um, to answer your question, I, I would be very confident in saying that there are probably a number of buildings that were, that were built in the last ten years that, that, that may meet our needs in terms of, of design, you know? We know that, you know, the municipality of Saint Mary's, for example-
Right.
-had built one recently, and, and we were, we had seen that design, you know, we, we've seen other designs, and certainly, if, if, certainly, from my perspective, that would be an important step to take so that we understand what we want. Because if, if, you know, and, and this was said in a meeting, you know, if, if we don't understand what we want, sometimes it's difficult to tell somebody else we don't want that. Uh, and so that has happened in other projects where if you don't, if you're not very clear in what you want, sometimes you get what you don't want. So, um, I, I would consider that part of the process. We, we wouldn't necessarily rush to an RFP. I think, I think we'd have to inform ourselves around, around other designs in the province for sure before we jump right into the, to the design phase. Yeah, no, I, I, I would recommend that that would be part of that RFP phase.
Maybe you got real lucky, you probably could negotiate the blueprint to the, the building that you, you do find that's adequate.
Yeah, I mean, the chances of us doing something identical to somebody else is, is very low, but the, you know, it's quite, I mean, I'd say the probability of it influencing what we want is quite high and, and giving us some insight, yeah.
You never know, you might be surprised, you might see that-
You're absolutely right.
-perfect building. That would be ideal, but it's not a very ideal world.
So, you know, we, we would be happy to, to do that piece as part of the planning part, right? I think, I think that, that's all one step, right? Not all that work is actually an RFP to an engineer or an architect that actually developed that for us. Part of that work is actually us going and getting that information, and, and I would recommend that as part of the process for sure.
Okay, Councilor Saret.
I'll ask your CAO one thing for sure, and I'm sure you've thought of this, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. Probably one big step also further to Councilor Donaldson is asking staff, what is it we want, what is it we need? You know, here's my office, I'm with three or four others, you know, I'm sure that has to be part of the process. If you have kind of a, a floor plan, and then you get, then you go see other places, and you've got some ideas, I'm, I'm sure that's very important. You've talked about it, I'm sure.
Yes, I mean, we did hire Mr. Chipman to give us, but, but, but his work was really, he did interview all staff, and he, he asked what their space needs were, but, but there was no real conversation with staff around whether the design suited their needs. Staff does have quite a few ideas of what it, it might look like and what things would need to be there. Um, you know, it does speak to the need of a, of a committee that steers this project. Um, and, and, and we don't, we have, we haven't really, we have a committee, a building committee, but, but this, I think, would be a little bit broader, is that we would want other, you know, potentially other people engaged in that process, right? So it's one thing to talk about, you know, what our internal needs are, and then I think it's, you know, once you decide you're gonna build something, you then have to look at external needs also, right?
From every, yes.
So, so we, we'd have to consider that as part, part and parcel of our planning, right? So, so we haven't done a lot of that planning piece because we're, we're trying to respect the process, right? And the process has brought us to this point. Obviously, if we, if the decision is to, is to start down the road of new, we'll have to do a comprehensive plan to support council's will on that.
Okay, Councilor Muse.
Um, I, I don't think we've made a decision or, or, or we haven't, we haven't made a motion in order to go to the next step, but I, I believe that the consensus is that that's what we wanna do. And if we are gonna go to the next step, I would say that probably it should go to the building committee. It, it, the building committee consists of staff and counselors-
Correct.
-which is probably, at least, you've got a mix of both, and I would say that maybe that's where it should go from, from here, is, is to go to the building committee to discuss, maybe location, just find out, you know, what the, and, and we always have to bring it back. It always has to be brought back to council anyway, right? Just recommendations, but it might be an easier, an easier, a, a job to do if you're, if you're four or five people together trying to make, you know, decide, or not decide, but, but pick what, what you feel is, is the ideal or the best location and the best design. Not, not to make a design. So do we need a motion now to go to the next step without saying exactly what the next step is? I mean, I, I-
I think we do. I think we do.
If so, I mean, I, I could make the motion that we, that, that we go to the next step saying that, that the next step will be to, to go to the building committee to look at for a location and, and probably some kind of a design that, that we feel would be appropriate. I can make that as a motion, if that's-
Sure.
Oh, seconded.
Now, with a building committee, we've got, we've got council, councilors, we've got councils-
Yes.
We have staff.
Yes.
Would, would we consider somebody from the, from the public? Maybe somebody has, you know, building experience, or?
I, I think, I think what, what I would wanna do is, is at least get some advice brought to that committee. Whether or not those members would be voting, members of the committee or not, I, I really don't know. We'd have to kinda revisit the terms of reference for that committee, because, because the work that the committee did while important before, it's really important now, because it's now going to, we're now, you know, we're looking to spend money, right, as opposed to, as opposed to talking about a concept. So from my perspective, you, you would want advice, you'd want advice on, on design, you'd want advice on, uh, look, you know, you might want, you know, historian involved around trying to do something historically accurate that depicts Tuscan in a way that's, you know, there's a variety of things that I would recommend that we revisit that, that membership, and that we would have at least an advisory component to that committee. And, and perhaps even that they would be, be voting members of that committee. They could, that could be the case. Now ultimately, these decisions have to come to council.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, it might give the wrong impression if we gave voting rights to advisors to that subcommittee, only to have a, a larger body actually make the decision. So I think you wanna be honest around-
Yeah.
-how that works.
Okay.
But we definitely need advice at that table because-
Yeah.
You know, because we're limited in terms of what we can do.
All right.
So just for clarity on the motion, um, so the motion is to, is to, is to-
Engage.
Is, is to, is to have the subcommittee engage in the next step, which is looking for a suitable location and, and design of a new building.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
So, so I think in the motion, I don't recall if the motion said new building. I don't remember, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I didn't, but that's exactly, that would be my, my hint.
Right, okay. I just, I wanted to be clear because if the motion-
Because that's based-
-is any ambiguity.
Sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
But based on, on the report, if we're gonna follow the, the advice of, of our meetings and what the report says, then I would say that would be our, that, that would be our goal, that would be what we would definitely go for.
Okay.
Because that seems to be what the public is, is telling us to do.
Okay.
But it has to be said in the motion.
Well, I just wanted to be very clear from my own perspective.
But I can certainly add that, look at design for new building.
Yeah, I can say, I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarity.
All right, so we're clear? So you've heard the motion, any more comments? Nope. All those in favor, see if you like saying aye?
Aye.
Negative? Okay, carry. All right, anything else on that, CM use, that should move us on to the next step?
Yep, and just so that we're all clear, what I hear is that the subcommittee will meet and will probably determine in terms of reference, and will determine a course of action. That course of action will come back to you before we make any major steps.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, perfect, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number five, which is council priorities progress report. You've got an attachment, but these, I was gonna say this little man, but this little person walking, so you can kinda see, did you wanna go through all of them, CM use, for the, I guess, for public, or?
Certainly, I can do that, Mr. Chair, very, very quickly.
Yeah.
Um, there are five priorities. Wedgeport sewer, we have engaged an engineer that is going to be doing some preliminary walkabouts in the community in the affected areas. We, they're not gonna do that before we contact the pub, the public. We have, we have kind of an aggressive timeframe here, so we're gonna wanna get into the community probably in the next couple of weeks to a month and inform them of the project, where it's at. There is a section in Wedgeport that we are targeting in terms of, of, of the potential pilot project, so those people will be contacted directly. There'll also be other information distributed in the community. You know, at this point, the project, it's very important that I, that I say this for those that are watching and also for council. We are in the baby stages of planning. We are planning a pilot project, which means it will be a voluntary project. We are not forcing anyone to get on a system in Wedgeport at this time. We are, we, we do know of many, many properties that are having problems, that they have either no system or failed systems, and so we're providing, this, this potential project, this project is providing what we think is the most economical decision for the resident and for us. We will be applying for Building Canada fund, funding, and if we are unsuccessful with Building Canada applications, the plan would be to utilize gas tax to do the pilot project. So the funding is not going to hold this one back. The advantage of this project is that we can tailor how many volunteers get on the system, which allows us to, to, to tailor the project. Whereas if you do a centralized sewer, you gotta spend, you, you can't just spend a little bit at a time, you gotta spend a big amount. So we did have an initial meeting with engineers, and they, they have done this before, they're quite impressive, actually. And, and we will be providing information to council and to the public around this project as we move it forward. As you know, it's your number one capital, so we're, we're treating it that way. But we're also careful because these kinds of projects generate a lot of, of information and sometimes misinformation in the communities, and we wanna make sure that people are understanding that just because somebody might be going on your property and taking a look, it doesn't mean they're gonna force or shut you down or force you to do something at this time. So that's an important message that we wanna deliver. Anyway, so, so that's at fifteen percent, as you see. Tracking field is closer to fifty percent. I would say that all of the applications for funding will be submitted this week. We have received confirmation from the town that they have earmarked two hundred thousand dollars towards the project. We will be asking you to do the same tonight later, and we haven't heard from the municipality of Yarmouth as of yet, and we are hearing encouraging words from federal government, no commitments obviously, around some of the language changes around the funding which might benefit this project. So this project was always a little, ugh, dicey with the federal funding because it didn't quite fit the ACOA profile, but it looks more encouraging as we go. And, you know, when you have partners, it makes it easier for people to try to put the square peg in the round hole, right? So that one is looking good. I expect that, I don't expect that we're going to be putting the polyurethane banyan surface this year. I, I don't envision that, but I envision that we would set it up to do it aggressively next year. And, and as you know, we're, we're waiting on the go-no-go, which we, which we, at the regional meeting, said would be fifty percent funding. If we got fifty percent funding from another source, it's a go, but otherwise, it's not. So again, timing will depend on, on that as well. We'll be, and we're in the process of- Um, we'll be, uh, and we're in the process of, uh, we will be creating a subcommittee on this project as well because we need advice from track and field people, from the school and from municipalities, et cetera. So that's all moving. Municipal building, well?
I think, I think there's a question that was asked and, and according to what you're saying would work, uh, is pay, uh, over two years, two different, two fiscal years?
Uh, yes, I believe that that's probably going to happen anyway.
Yes.
As a consequence of how the project will unfold. Yeah. Um, so, so, uh, the municipal building, what we just talked about it, that little nunum is probably going to move a little bit further down the road.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, the aquaculture, uh, project, uh, we've managed to be, uh, to, uh, of course, I think you're aware that we're, that we're, um, we've put, uh, monitors in the water, not people. Monitors that are electronic, uh, because that's problematic to put people like that. Anyway, so the, so, so it's, uh, we put monitors in and, and so that's ongoing. And, and the province has made some very positive announcements in the budget around aquaculture. And Argyle was actually mentioned, uh, as part of that process, part of a proactive approach, which is interesting. So moving along, uh, so that one is, it's one I think we'll always be working on. There's, there's, so, and affordable housing is, has really just begun.
Good. Any questions? We've heard none and we will move on to number six, which is the financial report. You have an attachment, uh, would that be, uh, Marcia doing the financial report? I've got your mic on, so.
So presented is the budget as of March thirty first, two thousand and sixteen, which is the municipality's year end, as you all know. Um, showing a surplus of a hundred and forty-three thousand, thirty-four dollars. Um, I'm going to concentrate first on the first, mainly on the first three pages. If you guys have any questions, just let me know. Um, I'm not going to go line by line, but just concentrate on the bigger variances. Um, if you look under change of use tax, thirty-five thousand, two forty-four, that is a D transfer tax. Um, going down the page, revenue from own sources, penalties and interest on taxes. I just kind of want to explain that variance there. That is mainly the tax department who has done a lot of work this year trying to contact residents who may have had outstanding or bad taxes. So they've contacted them to try to set up monthly payment plans, which seems to be working really, really well for the residents. Therefore, less interest is being added to their tax bill. Um, the ex, other extraordinary revenue there, you're going to see a, um, a variance of thirteen thousand. That is money that we have budgeted for, from Bataan, for the Starlight Designation Project. Um, that project was smaller than first anticipated. And we also received permission from ACOA to claim advertising costs that weren't initially supposed to be allowed, I guess. Therefore, ACOA paid for a higher portion of the total project cost. So therefore, we didn't build Bataan as, as much as anticipated because of that small project. Um, conditional transfers from other government, that is, you see federal government and provincial government. That is one hundred percent the active transportation feasibility project. We have received fifteen thousand dollars from the province. And we were, we had budgeted fifteen thousand dollars of gas tax money. You'll also see a, that we have budgeted thirty thousand in the expense side. That project, there was very little expense this year. The rest, the remaining will come in next year. Therefore, we only brought in, the difference of twelve thousand is, from the fifteen is the only expense that we had. So I only brought in the gas tax amount that was used to go against the expense. And one hundred percent of the provincial government funding will be deferred for next year. Um, the transfers for own, own reserves, there was two hundred and fifty thousand. That was used, that was going to be used for the dome techs demolition. And the rest was for other projects. Um, but we're, are we showing a surplus? We didn't bring that money in from the reserves only to potentially perhaps transfer back. Um, on page two, under the expenditures, um, just to highlight some of the bigger ones, information technology. Um, we usually try to budget for incidentals there. And there was some, also some capital equipment that may not have been purchased. Other assessment recovery costs and miscellaneous, I just wanted to go through that one. Um, that is the generator oil spill cost that we didn't anticipate for. That's where that gets budgeted in, or shown, I guess. Um, under transportation services, the, that's where you see the other road, road transportation. That is the thirty thousand dollars that we have budgeted for the feasibility study, which will get spent in next year. The air transport surplus, that is the capital grant money that was not s, all spent this year, but will be spent next year. Um, sewage and disposal, the west public of sewer, we had budgeted a little bit extra for sludge removal, which did not have to technically happen. Um, garbage and collection disposal, there was the fuel surcharge for the last, for the last few years, they've been charging us a fuel surcharge because of the price of gas. But this year, we had budgeted for it, but there was really barely announced because it had been unused. And some illegal dumping that had been budgeted for, but never used. Um, on slightly dangerous premises, there was, we had two cleanup properties, but they got billed to the residential properties, so. Um, community develop, development, um, there was some money set aside for doc recruitment for to potential, potentially go to Sherbrooke, but was not, did not happen, I guess. Housing and RDA, most of that is the other side of the supply project that didn't cost us as much, therefore the revenue didn't come in as much. The remaining of that was Argyle Economic Development Initiatives. That's basically you guys' priorities. Sometimes we, we put a little bit in the budget. This year it was aquaculture, but we received funding for that. Therefore, no money was spent there. Um, recreation services, there was some su, savings in the summer students because the recreation director has to budget so early in the year. She then extends some funding, so which means that it wasn't all projected. All the money projected was not used. And there are also some savings in the capital projects, which will then be transferred to next year. Um, the public library, the, most of that savings was on fuel and snow removal. This, uh, the courthouse had a capital equipment that they wanted to purchase this year, but it will only be purchased next year. And the last one is transfer to the reserves. That money there, they're showing there, two hundred and twenty-four thousand is the remaining of the two hundred and fifty thousand transfer that we, for the dome techs demolition. So that's about it. Is there any questions remaining?
No questions, no problems?
Sorry, I'm not sure if CA Muse maybe wanted to have a short discussion on the transfers.
All right, right, so, um, just for clarity, uh, not that we have to make a motion on this right away, but, uh, the province is asking for operating surpluses to be transferred into the, into a reserve. So right now, it looks like we're at a hundred and forty-three thousand. Um, we still haven't received all of the information to, to, to be sure that that's, you know, actually the number. But, um, what we'll do is, uh, what I'd like for council to think about is, is, um, some of our commitments, which we'll be talking about in the future, uh, in, in, in the meeting here today. Uh, both capital and operating reserves are an option for you. And, um, uh, more than likely, what we will be recommending is a blended, a blended approach where we put some in, in capital and some in operating. I don't have that information today. But just so that you know, that, that we, we have to transfer that every year. We can't just leave it in surplus. So I just wanted for you to know that and, uh, and that we'll be bringing a recommendation to you, uh, once the number solidifies itself a little bit more. And, uh, and that we're a bit more comfortable around what we're going to do next year, in next year's budget. Okay?
All right, go ahead. I assume you only have to do that after we've been audited?
Uh, well, the audit will probably, uh, the answer is probably, uh, yes. What we'll do is, what I think we'll have to do is, is generate a motion. If we're going to actually move it into the capital reserve, we probably need a motion for that. What the auditors will probably, will likely do is whatever's left. They'll automatically flip it to the reserve because that's what the province is asking us to do, operating reserve, that is. So the motion will be more than likely to drive an amount to the capital reserve. The rest of it, we can either deal with it by motion ourselves or wait for the auditor to provide us the entry when everything is done. Yes.
Okay, uh, Council Muse.
Yeah, um, it was mentioned that in some, in some areas where we had the, uh, the surplus, that it wasn't done this year, but it will be done next year. So does that money that we didn't use, when you're saying if it goes into, into reserve, can, can that be added to this, this coming, you know, like to pay for some of the, the things that are going to get done this year that weren't done?
Yes.
So do we transfer the money and was really a carryover, as I see it? Where, where it would go towards that project anyway?
Absolutely. That's what, that's what we'd be, that's part of the recommendation that we would bring to you.
Okay.
That's why I'm a little hesitant to give you that because it actually depends on what projects you decide to continue with in your new budget. So, so we've identified about, I think about forty-three thousand of, of the, of the one forty-three. I think we've identified at least forty-three that could easily be attached to something that was deferred into the new budget, right? But you may choose not to do that. So, so that would be just a, you know, that decision would be then adjusted based on your, on your budget deliberations.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what we do. That's what we try to do every year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? So at this time, do we pass a motion to?
Accept.
Accept? Okay. May we start with a word of Donson, uh, seconded by councillor Book? Councillor Donaldson?
Can we make motions to transfer reserves before we get the official auditor's, uh, report or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you can.
Good.
Um, they, they may make an adjustment if, if, uh, if it isn't sufficient.
Yep.
Uh, if you transfer more than you need, that's okay. But if you don't transfer enough, they may make an adjustment.
Okay, so you've heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, carry. All right, uh, so that was the financial report. Number seven, other business and for decision. Seven A is community halls, uh, capital project grant program. Is that, uh, CA Muse or is that, uh, Mr. Fraughton?
What would you like to do, Mr. Fraughton?
I can take that. Um, you will see that, uh, the document that's presented on the agenda is the same document that was presented to you earlier and that was presented to the committee halls, uh, in the meeting with them. Um, there are, or should be highlighted, um, amendments to this document, which I don't see in here. Um, so the amended documents, uh, have to do with three things. The first is, um, the amount of money that, uh, will be given in total. So there was questions regarding, uh, for example, if three community halls were approved and their total amount didn't attain the forty-five thousand dollar budget that was set aside, would you accept more applicants? Um, so we put in there that, um, if three applications do not reach the amount, other applications will be considered, providing the total dispersed amount does not exceed forty-five thousand. So potentially we could do five, do six, but we'll do hopefully a minimum of, of three. Um, the other was to do with a little around the, the allocation of funding. So there was just some clarity issues around, um, the fact that we would prefer not to fund a portion of a project. So the goal of this grant is to provide funding to the community halls so they can actually do a capital project and, and have it done. So we changed the, one of the lines to the muse policy seeks to support projects that can be brought to completion. So it's just a different way of saying that. And the last was a, uh, amendment to the evaluation criteria. So we added five points to the evaluation, uh, table. And that was, uh, we added the willingness to contribute towards the project. So we're adding in the evaluation, um, consideration whether or not the, the halls are willing to contribute in one way, shape or form. It could be, uh, by either fundraising for the project or it could be in-kind labor. It could be different types of things, but are they willing to help out? Or are they just expecting just to get the check and, and do the project? So those were, were the amendments that were made based on comments that we received from you, comments that we received from the community halls and I guess a second sober look from, um, staff or, or other, uh, citizens. Is there any, actually, there are, there is one, one other one that I forgot, sorry. Um, it has to do with an appeal process, so, excuse me. We thought, um, since an evaluation committee, uh, aside from council as a whole, is going to be reviewing the applications and recommending to you what applicants should be approved first. Um, there could be a situation where council would decide otherwise. So not based on the evaluation that was done by the committee. So we felt it necessary to put in the, the grant program the process for a call to appeal a decision made by council. Um, and it is in there, um, on page six, at, at the, the top of the page. Um, so it just simply states that the appeal process provides the applicants an opportunity uh, to seek reconsideration. Um, and it states that they must submit, uh, in writing within fourteen days of receiving their, the decision. Um, and it can, it will be made to, to myself and, and formal letter will, will come to council. So that then the, the evaluation criteria would, would be reevaluated in that, in that sense. So we, we would have a second look at, at how it was evaluated. That is practically the, the amendments that were made. Is there any questions around? Anything else or the amendments or?
Council Muse?
Um, two questions.
Sure.
When you had the meeting with the, uh, with the clubs, how many participated in that? Is it, most of the clubs in the area participated in that? Were there some that weren't, uh, represented here at the meeting?
All of them, uh, except two participated, uh, and that was because of scheduling conflicts and we met with them afterwards.
So everybody has gone, gone through.
Yeah.
Now, going back to the question that you said, the amendment whereby if one organization didn't, didn't apply for the, or didn't use the full amount, so, so that, the way it was, it was, the way I understand it was it was based on fifteen thousand per for three clubs. So they're allowed fifteen thousand.
Correct.
So what happens in the case where one, one club uses seven, seven thousand and then it gives eight thousand to the second one? Can they reapply to get the next year? Because they can't apply, we, we, we were looking at it as if they could only apply every five years because of the way it was set up.
Yeah.
So now that we, we, we've used a forty-five, but not everybody got fifteen. Can they reapply before the five years? How would that work to get the remainder of their fifteen?
The way that is.
Just, uh, a thought.
It's a good que, it's a good question. The way that is written in the document would be that they are eligible to apply for up to fifteen thousand once. So if they choose to apply for ten and they get ten, then they wouldn't be able to apply.
They've had, they've had their, their, the application, yes.
That's how it's written.
Because we're not going to give them fifteen if, if, if a job is only, is only ten. We're only going to pay for whatever it costs.
That's correct. That's how it's written in here. Now whether or not that is what you would like or, or what.
Yeah.
And, and they were fine with that. They, they, they would have, in the discussion we had with them, they would rather give, obviously, to more uh, if, if possible in the beginning, uh, than having to wait further along the line. But, um, that's how it's written in here.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councillor Donaldson?
So do we need a motion to accept this, this all capital grant project? I will so make that a motion that we approve this, uh, community hall capital project grant application and bylaws.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carry. Thank you, Mr. Fraughton. All right, we'll move on to seven B, track and field funding. I'm sure that's, uh, for CA Muse.
Yes, this was the last minute, Mr. Chair, is the last minute addition to the, uh, the attachment's a last minute, minute addition. Um, however, you'll see that it's, it's, it's really straightforward. It's based on, on the recommendation. It's based on, on the recommendation, uh, that the regional, uh, meeting of, of all three councils brought to your attention. Uh, it outlines the project cost at one point two million with, that's our estimate. That's high, that's still fairly high level at this point. That the investment is eligible under sixty-five AG, the MGA, and that I would recommend that, that council consider moving this project forward in priority, uh, based on our current funding, uh, environment. And to allocate the amount of two hundred thousand towards a major upgrade of the track and field facility that, that shall be located at Ecosse, Ceguera de Paramba. It is there now, I guess, the upgrade will be there too. A second recommendation, uh, is, would be to utilize federal gas tax funds, uh, which are eligible for this project to the amount possible. Sometimes there are caps to how much you can use in gas tax, particularly when you're also getting other federal funds. So I guess what I would say is that council, to the best of our ability, to be using the gas tax as opposed to our capital reserves or other reserves would be my recommendation.
Okay.
I would certainly agree that, uh, the motion, uh, move to allocate two hundred thousand towards the upgrade for the track and field project and that the project proceed upon confirmation of fifty percent funding from the provincial and federal government. And the federal gas tax fund be utilized for this project to, to the extent possible.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion, any more questions? Question? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carry. Okay, move on to seven C. Yarmouth Hospital Foundation nomination. Press the wrong one here, just a second.
If I may ask, is there a reason I can't open the attachments on my laptop?
It's in Chinese online, have Chinese and.
The top part, the top part would be, it's for confidentiality reasons. It automatically scribbles it, yeah.
Something happened.
Yeah, yeah. I seen that the first time.
But this is sent to Chris, I can, I guess I can read it. As per your email below, the nomination committee of the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation has chosen Marcel Pache of Tuscat as the, uh, the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation represent, representation of the Miss Bay Argyle. Uh, please confirm that the Miss Bay Argyle accepts Marcel Pache as the representative to be nominated at the, uh, Yarmouth Hospital Foundation June AGM two thousand and sixteen. And it's, uh, from Shirley Donson, who's the chair. Yes, uh.
I will move the approval or approval or appointment, I guess, we appoint?
Your approval.
Or?
To accept the appointment.
Yeah. Accept the appointment or whatever.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who appoints.
Hospital Foundation?
Yeah.
Marcel Pache as our representative.
Yeah, I think, I think it's their appointment.
Is their appointment?
Uh, and that we accept that he represents.
That's right.
Uh, the community. Uh, this is not a subcommittee of council.
No.
So, uh, that's the.
Yes.
That's what you, that's what the warden is, is getting, is getting at, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm spinning around here.
So we have a mover and do we have a second here? Seconded by Counsel Saret, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, carry. All right, we'll move on to seven D. Draft, operating budget and highlights. Well, I'm pretty sure probably yours, Alain?
Yes, probably. Uh, and Marcia's here also, uh, to, to, in case, uh, in case my language gets too accounting and, uh, and, and we, we all know that you prefer to hear financial information from, from Marcia.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, I know, I know. I hear you. Um, so, uh, but you have me unfortunately for a little while longer on this one. Um, so I don't, it wasn't my intention to have, uh, to go line by line on the budget, okay? My intention was to bring to your attention some of the things that are happening and, and, uh, its impact on, on our decisions moving forward. And also what I'd like to do before we get, uh, into this is to set some dates so that we can have proper, uh, budget deliberations. Um, and, and that will be, and we'll, I guess, I'll, I'll open it to, I'll ask council what their wishes are this year around that. So, um, so this is about, this is a little earlier than usual. I think we may have presented, uh, uh, the operating budget at this time last year, but I don't think we had the capital budget, uh, at this time last year. So, um, the highlights, uh, the, the description, um, you know, kind of highlights where we're at and what we're finding. So what we're finding is that, and this is across Nova Scotia, uh, the market values have, have taken a bit of a dip. So, and the, the other, uh, thing that's happened is that the cap on assessment is at point three percent. So we really, un- unless we're looking at increasing the rate, we're not looking at significant increases in tax revenues this year, okay? So you, and you see the numbers, right? So, so the residential, uh, increase is fourteen thousand dollars. Well, that's like not even a cent, like it's, it's, it's very low. So if you look at the budget, if you look at the increase as a percentage, um, it is, you know, it's, it's not even one percent. So thankfully, a couple of things have occurred this year, um, that, that helped us along. One is the, is the wind turbines, uh, in Wetchport. This is the first full year, uh, for two of them. So that's an extra twelve thousand dollars in revenues, uh, this year. So after this year, however, the increase is limited to one percent. So where we're showing, uh, two hundred and eleven thousand, uh, in total commercial, uh, special tax agreement for wind turbines, that will only go up one percent a year, so two thousand a year, okay? So this twelve thousand's one time unless we're, we manage to get another turbine. Uh, so this specifically excludes the project that you are in with the wind, the sale of wind energy, okay? So this revenue is taxation based on other people owning wind turbines and selling power to Nova Scotia Power. This is Publico Point, this is Wetchport, this is Black Pond Road, okay? That line. Down below what you'll find is, is, um, is, is a, a section called Sales of Services. And it says Sale of Wind Energy. And that is your Wellington, your Rose Road property, uh, uh, project.
Confit.
That's, that's your confit, right? That's the confit you own, okay? Cause you're selling that service as opposed to receiving tax on that service. So again, that's another saving grace because, uh, that's a seventeen thousand this year that we didn't have last year. And that number should go to forty in the second year. That's only a part year. So those decisions are helping us in times where we're trying to keep the assessment and the rate manageable for our residents. So, you know, uh, it's not decreasing our, our, it's not decreasing the area, area, uh, sorry, the tax rates. It's not, it's not resulting in a decrease in the tax rates. Um, but it's, but it's protecting us against increases at this time, okay? Uh, other, other hi- highlights on the revenue side include, uh, and, and a lot of these, by the way, you know, they're not gonna change considerably, um, between now and, and the end of the, of the, uh, budget process, the revenue piece, unless of course you're looking at changing the rate. So, so the first question that, you know, I know is, is a difficult one for council to answer today. I'm not asking you today, but one of the questions I'd like for you to take with you is, is the rate gonna stay? Right? So there's two rates we have to consider here. And so, um, and we will provide you information on the ramifications of a rate change, okay? What does, what does it mean to you as, as, as council, okay? Um, I don't, and, and I had absolutely no intention of, of driving that discussion, uh, today. That's something that we can do later. Uh, sewer and water is showing a sharp increase in revenue. Um, that's based on draft budgets that we'll be presenting to, uh, the West Publico and Tuscat Sewer Committees. Uh, we are trying to engage in an annual increase in those rates cause those rates are well below market, uh, to, when you compare them to other, other, um, sewer rates, um, across the province. Uh, and we have work to do.
They don't affect our volume, right?
No, yeah, thank you for, thank you for that. That has absolutely zero impact on anybody other than those on the West Publico system.
Right.
Right? That rate is designed for those people who are Tuscat or West Publico, yeah. And the same is true for your, uh, special assessments for the fire area rates. The fire area rates impact only those that are paying that rate in that particular region.
Counsel Donaldson.
Absolutely not to do with what he's talking about. I should have mentioned this earlier. I have to leave to go to Argyle Bupptick Festival Planning Meeting at eight o'clock with the old Argyleers. So when I just get up and disappear, that's what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
If, if I'm still talking budget, I won't be offended.
We may leave too.
But the subtle, the subtle hint was not lost on me. And the timing of that was interesting, but anyway.
You wanna hear Marcia first?
So, uh, okay, I'll move quicker. Uh, revenue from, no, no, I'm just, I'm just teasing, Counselor. So the revenue from own sources, uh, is down, uh, for three particular reasons. One, one is, is offset by, by the fact that the Starlight project is completed. So that we, we were, we were set to receive, you know, almost seventy thousand dollars last year. We didn't receive that much, but we didn't spend that much either. The project is done, so that's off the plate. So where it looks like we're losing revenue, that's not really the case. The project was finished and the expense disappears. We are in fact showing a reduction in, in return on investments, which is interest revenue on our bank account. That's due to a drop in our interest rates, um, and also penalties and interest on taxes. That's, that's interest on overdue taxes. Uh, more and more people are on a payment plan, so that is dropping that number. You know, I've always, I've always shared this with, with you. That's a number we'd like to see drop because that's helping residents, uh, in a way that, 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 you know, that, that makes sense. We don't, you know, people that get behind are paying sixteen percent. Those are probably not the people that you want paying sixteen percent, right? And I'm not trying to be judgmental, I'm just saying we wanna protect our residents from, from, from some of the fiscal problems that occur when you don't pay these, these taxes, uh, in a, in a, in a quick way. So, um, federal government transfers again is down due to the Starlight project. Uh, you know, much of the revenues that we're getting from the province are just, they're not moving, right? Uh, but the expenses are.
That's it.
So, uh, so the transfers from other reserves, uh, I'm not gonna talk about that just yet because that, that, I can talk about them all at once when we talk about the expense and the revenue. What you'll find is that the transfers from own reserves, revenue and expense are way up, okay? So I'll get into that maybe a little later. I wanna go on page two and talk about the things that are more in your control. Um, so, so page two shows general government, starting with general government services. Uh, one of the things that you might notice in the presentation of the budget is that the language around the line items is, is changed considerably. Uh, we have been, excuse me, we have been using an old template to present information. So I know that sometimes there's questions like, what is, what is this other taxes? Or what is this, what does that mean or what does this mean? So we try to take the language and, and make it more what it is, okay? So, so general government services is, 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 is an example where we regroup certain expenses to make it more sensible to the reader. Uh, you know, one of the line items of particular note is the second to last one that says grants to organizations. That was always lumped in with elections and conferences and memberships. And so anybody wanted to know how many grants are out there, we'd be like, okay, let's get out our calculator and, and, and our, you know, and our abacus and, and, you know, and try to figure out what the heck is going on, right? But now you can one liner boom, you can see and comparatively. And so we tried to move the comparative balances, uh, in that area as well. So that gives you better information, okay? So, uh, in, so, so there's a thirty thousand dollar increase from budget to budget, um, in general government services. Most of the change is due to increase in employer benefits, which is your CPP, your EI, your medical plan. Uh, an increase, well, there's a one-time increase due to the election. We actually, you know, we budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars for that. We don't, we hope it doesn't cost that much, but we have to kind of budget the, the worst case scenario around cost and then, and hopefully it's better, uh, than that. And, and we are anticipating savings, uh, because we're, we're hoping not to have another oil leak. So that's one of the, the areas that, uh, that might show, uh, a savings. There's, there's other, the other things that have been moved back and forth. But, but the thirty thousand increase in general government services is driven primarily by the election, okay? Uh, protective services is up sixty thousand budget to budget. Keep in mind that we do budget conservatively. Uh, and if you look at actuals, sometimes you'll see that the actuals are actually lower than, than both budgets. So, but we are budgeting conservatively, but under protective services, police protection, there's, that's the number. That's the number, thirty-one thousand increase. Uh, property inspection, twenty-seven thousand increase. About seventeen thousand of that is, is, is our, is staff's reaction to, to some of your priority, priority conversations around facilities and how they need to be maintained better than they are. So we engage, we actually, uh, we have hired somebody, which I will announce in camera cause not everybody knows yet, uh, not that, I mean, it's, it's not gonna be a kept secret, but I just, I don't, I wanna respect those that were unsuccessful, which is why it's in, in camera today. But we did hire somebody, very pleased with that person and will be starting in May and will be helping Duane. And we will likely get the student as well for a shorter period of time. But still, we'd have, you know, two, you'd have up to three people working at the same time on, on, in certain areas, which means we should be able to do a little bit more in the communities around some of the, the places that we, we decided that we weren't gonna do, you know, years ago. Those things can come back on the table.
Is that full time, part time? Is that a good word to put it? Could, uh, or, or like, it'll be every year, is what I'm trying, it's not just this summer?
Well, the expect- Well, the expectation would be, uh, that it would be, we believe that the work will, is required, uh, part-time each year.
Yeah.
So it would be from, from May to September, October. It might be a shorter timeframe after we go through the first year. We may think about it differently, but I, you know, this is a commitment that isn't just a pilot project. It, it is actually an additional investment, so. So that's something you need to be aware of and, and agree with, right? I mean, we're gonna do it this year because you told us to, but, but like this is something, this is impacting our budget, so we wanna be sure where everybody's clear. Um, so transportation services is close to, uh, budget. Uh, the, I will, I will send a bit of a warning that the airport, uh, may be low in this current year's budget. Uh, we're still working on, uh, what the capital requirements are. It may or may not impact this number, okay?
Counsel Saret.
But in, in the transportation services on that line, AT plan will be paid for using gas stats. And provincial grant, what does AT plan?
Active transportation plan. Yeah, sorry, we, we're used to using.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, for the, for the, for the active transportation people, it's automatic, right? But, uh, I apologize for that.
No, that's okay.
Uh, environmental health services, I won't speak too much on that because that increase is, is also shown on revenue. Uh, and again, that is paid for entirely by the users of the, of the, the wastewater. Garbage collection and disposal is showing very consistent from last year. Um, these costs are rising all the time. Um, the, the, uh, the garbage contract goes up by three percent every year, the collection. And the rates for garbage, uh, uh, disposal and recycling are also rising, not every year, but they're rising. So the only variable for us in terms of saving money is volume, right? So, you know, how much garbage are people generating in, in the community of Argyle, uh, year to year? So we've had times where we've estimated that number to be, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand and end up being six hundred. And, and this year, we, we were almost bang on in our estimate, which we usually like to not be. We, we'd like for that cost to be lower, but that cost is one that is rising and it's gonna continuously put pressure on you as counselors to. And so this is, this is a bit of a concern. The concern I'm trying to express is that, uh, some of these expenses that we don't have a lot of control over are taking over as a percentage of your budget. So your discretionary amount, you know, your decisions to do senior safety or your decisions to do economic development, you're dealing with something that's doing this. And it's being taken over by other mandatory costs such as education, such as garbage, which is, which is a mandatory service, not a mandatory cost, policing, corrections, et cetera. So I highlighted the fact that you, you might be making about thirty thousand dollars in increased tax revenues. You paid sixty thousand more to the province. So you're minus thirty right out of the gates, right? So it's a concern. We're able to manage it. We're able to manage it with, uh, with, you know, the fact that we've had, you know, reserves put aside for these kinds of situations. So, so I'm certainly not recommending that we make drastic, that we take drastic measures this year. But keep in mind that if the trend of light increases in assessment continue, this council may have to consider either reducing services or increasing the rate. And I'm not saying that for this year, but that might be two, three years down the road. So continuing on, recreation is showing some savings of thirty-four thousand dollars. I skipped one. I skipped more than one. Public health services is showing a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar savings. That is a massive savings from, from last year's budget. Last year's budget, remember, included the family residency project that didn't happen. So that's sixty of the one fifteen. The other, I mean, the remaining amount is a, is a reduction in the cost of doctor recruitment. And the reason why there's a reduction in cost of doctor recruitment is that we cannot recruit doctors. There currently, we only have one available space in Yarmouth County, so we cannot actually recruit more than one family resident at this time. That could change, but for now, that's all we got. So, so, you know, so the, most of the cost that's showing there is actually the cost of, of the deficits that we're incurring at the medico clinics. Environmental development services is showing a big savings. Most of that is the fact that the Starlight project is not, is completed. That's where most of that ninety-three thousand dollar savings is coming from. Tourism is showing a reduction in cost. We had some additional projects last year that are not happening this year. That's why that's showing lower. Recreation is showing a thirty-four thousand dollar savings. And that's, that's due to the fact that we had almost forty thousand dollars in facilities, major facilities upgrades. That wasn't the tennis courts, that was everything else. That work has essentially been completed. So, so only seven thousand of that has actually come forward into the new year. So that's why there's a savings. Education, you see it, thirty-two thousand dollars, nothing we can do, at least today. And then the transfers to reserves. So the transfers to reserves, they're huge this year, but that's a one-time situation. This is essentially ninety-nine percent DOMTECs. So what, what we're saying is from our reserve, seven hundred and fifty thousand will come in and seven hundred and fifty will go out to the industrial commission to pay for the project in its completion. So that assumes that that's all of it, okay? So that may not occur the way that we expect this year. That number might be lower. I'm hoping that it's lower. Obviously, we are, we are going to be getting prices around some of that, and so hopefully that that's good news. And there's, you know, and as you know, for those of you know that are on the commission, there's a variety of moving targets there. So it shows, right now, we're showing revenues of eight point three. If you pull, and, and expenses, of course, matching that to the penny. If you pull out the transfers, that's, it would probably, it would be closer to, to seven point three. The, we are still anticipating a transfer of a hundred and twenty thousand to the capital reserve. We do that every year. And I would, I would recommend that practice continue. It's prudent to, to save for the future, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't sacrifice the future investments for short-term investments, is my opinion. And, and we're being rewarded for that as part of the fiscal, the financial conditions index. If you look at our, our ratio, our ratios provincially, we are very strong in our decisions around saving for the future comparatively to other rules. That's one of our strengths financially, so I would suggest we have to, we should continue that positive practice. And so that was longer than I thought it would be, but it is numbers. And you figured, you probably had it coming. So that is, believe it or not, high level. And what I'd like to do is, certainly we're not presenting this to you in final at this time. What we'd like to do is, is, is address any sort of initial questions or concerns you might have around what you've seen. I try, I try not to, to, to give my dire kind of picture of the future influence what you're looking to do this year. We are anticipating a transfer from last year's reserves to, to make this budget work, okay? So if you have other things in mind around additional investments, it would be good to put them on the table now so that we can effectively work through them and show you what that might impact, how that might impact the budget.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, is, is this the right time to say this or whatever, but if it's, no, it's dummy. District, our district community grants that the councillors have of two thousand dollars. I wonder if councillor would, would, would agree to, to up that, if it takes a motion, I'd make the motion, up that to, from two thousand, like to three, because there's some councillors, I know in here now, they have like five and six district community grants for, for, for the residents of, in our areas. I don't feel like, if somebody asks for a district, district community grant, I, I can't see giving them like two hundred dollars, because there's not much you can do with two hundred dollars or what have you. What I've been doing in the, in the, in the past years is that the, the grants of five hundred dollars, I give it the five hundred dollars for district community grants when they ask. So I don't know if it takes a motion, but if it does, I'd like to make a motion that we, we up that amount for each councillor from two thousand to three thousand. And probably leave the thing at, at the same thing, a max, maximum of five hundred dollars. So that will give you a little bit more leeway to, in case somebody, you know, if you have six, you can accommodate them. So I don't know, is that, Mr. Chair, does I take a motion or?
I, I'm sure we take a motion, I'm just not exactly sure. CA news, it's just a matter of a motion from, from council.
If, if the motion's on the floor, if the, if the motion's seconded and voted in the, in the positive, we would make it happen. I mean, it's, 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 it's your call. Absolutely your call.
So it's been moved and seconded, Counselor Surratt?
Well, you, you're, you're presenting an operating budget, draft operating budget. This is a balanced operating budget. Obviously, I read it over. Obviously, this will be impacted by nine thousand dollars.
That's correct.
A thousand dollars per, per councillor. So we'll have to find nine thousand dollars in, in added revenues. We need, or in, in cost-saving measures.
Correct. At this, yes, that's true.
That's the question, yeah.
There, there, I, what I would, what I would bring to the council for consideration is, is probably a blended approach. Is I would probably look to save monies elsewhere. And I would probably, if I couldn't find the nine, I would increase the transfer from the prior year reserve to meet your obligation.
If I may.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Doh.
We give money to various organizations and causes throughout the years, but it seems I will have to very much agree with what councillor Murphy says. Typically, the, the requests we get for these grants are, it's almost discouraging. I always feel discouraged that I can't give them more. They're always amazing, like, not once did I get a request from something I didn't want to give to. They're all, all their requests are usually organizations that are doing amazing things in our communities, so if. One thing I always positively say about the municipality of Argyle is financially, how we're, we're conscious with every penny we spend. It is a positive thing of, of our municipality, I'm quite proud of it, I'm quite proud of our staff. However, if there was a possible way to find nine thousand, don't get me wrong, I don't mean to disrespect on choices we made in the past, but we've given money to, to worse things. Although we, we think things through, there's, there's times that we do not, have not seen the benefit that we had hoped to see, is how I should say, to different things that we've given to, whereas this would be, this would be a form of giving back into our communities that we know we're going to get a bang for our buck. So I think we should, I very much agree with what councillor Murphy is saying, and I think we should look into this very much.
Warden Doctorow.
I agree with part of what you're saying, but the motion says that we still have the limit of five hundred.
So you're not going to be able to give seven hundred or?
Oh, yes, no, I, I did understand that, sorry, I did wear that wrong, I was saying that, yes. I understand the limit will be, but we're still getting requests from many.
Giving to more, more people.
Of course.
Now, so there's a motion.
Yeah, no, I did get it, I just said, yeah, for sure.
Now, speaking of district community grants, one of the problems that I've run into this year in my district is I have a hard time finding enough not-for-profit organizations in my district, in my physical district, because a few of them who were in my district moved their operation, brought their operation into Warden Doctorow's district. So I had to basically scrounge and try my best to find the, the, the four, the four organization. So if we went to three thousand, I would like to have maybe some changes to the, to, to the, the policy of the committee grant, district committee grant, because I just couldn't find any, right? And it's, you know, it's just, just one of those things that happened. One was the Caban, who, the Grove Guide Caban, who, that one, the, is for sale, so that one is no longer in the, you know. And then the, the West Public Health Club, which was in my district, is now in Warden Doctorow's district, so. Yeah, so I, I basically could only find four organizations that I had, and I gave five hundred dollars each. So if we were to go up to three thousand, well, there'd have to be a change because I, there's no way I could, you know, yeah.
Just, just to address the, the, the piece on the policy, what the motion would in fact do is require us to change the policy. Because the policy says to, it says how many, like, so, and it says there's a cap of five hundred. So regardless, we're going to have to open that policy. I think the, the motion on the floor, you know, asks for the amount to be increased. So that's like, that's the easy part, right? The, the, I guess the, the two other questions is, is whether we want the, the boundary to be a driver in the decision, which is your issue, and also the maximum, right? So, so you may want more flexibility around that also. So anyway, I just wanted to mention, those are probably the three things that we would look to change based on this motion that we would, that we would bring back to you, just for information purposes. I apologize if I got in the way.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Good, good, good talk, yeah.
But there is still a, so there is a motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Surratt and then seconded by councillor, all right? That's sorry, moved by councillor Murphy and, and seconded by councillor, all right. Any more discussions or questions? I haven't heard none, no call for the questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry.
So we'll make the change to the budget to increase that number, and we will bring a budget change, a policy change for the next meeting. So the, the maximum of five hundred was part of the motion. So what we'll be bringing is the maximum of five hundred. That's what the motion said. So if, if you, if, if you don't agree with that, you'll have to debate it when we bring the policy to your attention. That still can be changed, once you see the policy in its entirety. Because I'm sensing that that's going to be an issue for some of you. So, okay, so that's fine. So whether, so coming back to the budget itself, there was probably some other comments or questions.
Counselor Surratt.
A couple of things. The Mariners Center, we, I saw you addressed it here in our, in our highlights. I think we may, we may be foreseeing that you were saying about costs going up. And it just might just be a comment, but probably the Mariners Center, those costs will not go down, like, you know, from what we're seeing. Is that just a comment from you, CEO Muse?
What I think, yes, absolutely. What we're seeing with the Mariners Center are two things. Number one, in the first year that we came on, there was really an error on, in the budget side. They had budgeted the heating costs to be much lower than what they actually were, and that was, that was for two reasons. One was the price of fuel, and the other one was that they hadn't anticipated a project that would, that would, it was an energy efficiency project, if you remember. That didn't actually occur. So, so now what's happened is one of the three partners was backed off a little bit on that project because the price of fuel came down, and they, they weren't, they weren't convinced that the payback period was as accurate as, as, as was initially presented, which, which is probably true, because your payback period is based on an assumption that the fuel's going to be at price A, and when the price comes down, obviously, it's going to take you longer to pay back. Anyway, so there's, so, so we're not an owner, so we, we haven't participated too heavily in that debate. However, it does impact us, because I know we, we've brought this to your attention before, that, that, that would have reduced operating costs, which we would have benefited from. I think the budget right now, where it stands at about forty-seven, I believe it is. I would expect that number to be accurate. I don't expect it to be higher unless there is a capital request that would come to you independently of this, that you would have, you would, you would be able to make an independent decision on. Also, keep in mind that you have put aside, I believe it's forty thousand, for, for a project that may or may not occur for the Mariners Center. So I think, and expecting the deficit to be at thirty-three thousand dollars a year is probably not realistic. I think you're probably in the late thirties to mid, mid forties now. And I think Chris would probably agree with that based on the fact that he, he attends the Mariners Center meetings and is, is an active participant in the budget discussions. My only, my, my only other point on the Mariners Center would be that, if you remember, we got in on the Mariners Center with two agreements. One was the elimination of the taxes that saved us sixty thousand. And what we were saying was, okay, now that we've settled that, we can invest some back into the community in a way that we preferred. It's kind of creeping up towards that sixty, however, but that, that's, that's, I think it's realist, forty-seven is realistic. And, and probably based on the agreement requires a motion, not immediately, but it requires a motion because it's over the threshold, that they can move forward with that budget. They need permission from you to go over the thirty-five, I believe.
Thirty-five is all.
I think it's thirty-five, thirty-three, thirty-three and a third or something. So anyway, that's a long answer to your question.
No, that's good. The, Mr. Chair, if I made the second question, I think it's to Marshall. I think it would be to Marshall, or maybe you see, I'll address it to Marshall. I see when I looked at the operating budget, and when you go down into the expenditures into detail, and if we looked at the warden, the councillors, whether it be the CAO or staff, salary is, is more than was budgeted on every item. And there has to be an explanation on that. Would there, could you maybe explain why, why that is?
Yeah.
Because we all make a salary, so why is it more?
That is the one that we discussed, Al and I had a conversation about it, to, as to what we did, but we decided to show the actual, last year, at the last fiscal year, there was, so like, last year's payment or payroll salary was put into this current year. It was a little budget cutoff. So we didn't catch it last year. So this year, I'm like, why is it over? So what it is, is basically you're showing twenty-seven pays in this fiscal year, when in fact, one of them should have been last year.
I get you.
So I'm hoping that this year we caught it, so that next year it should line up there. But I'm glad you asked that.
No, that's good, that's all right. Thank you for the answer.
There, there was in absolutely no way, shape or form an overpayment of salary.
Well, I already knew, I said there has to be an explanation.
Yeah, and I guess what happens is we do not set up a payable at the end of the year each year. So typically what happens with a lot of year ends, they do a cutoff. They go right to the date, and they say, okay, well, you might have been paid on this day, but it actually related to other days. We don't do that journal entry, we never did. So what happens is, as a consequence of that, is once in a while, you get this. You get that, you get that twenty-seventh pay that sneaks in.
Right.
Year-end.
Year-end. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, that's a great question.
Any more questions? I haven't heard none, I guess we, we're not approving this just as just for, for information for now, and as we go on, we'll get the final, the final draft and.
Yes, so, so I guess what I would do, Mr. Chair, because Yes, so so I guess what I would do, Mr. Chair, because I know I've spoken about uh, on this long enough, is I'd like for council to to examine this, at least at a high level, understand what your objectives might be, and whether some of these expenses you may have questions around. We are available to answer any questions individually or as in a group. Also, if you feel like investments, you're not sure whether we should be spending this much in this area, and you don't, and you want to have a a private conversation about that, because it engages, you know, different departments, I'm available for you for you to have that conversation. This is your budget, you hire me to prepare the budget, I have staff that helps me do that. Your job is to set the rate. This is the probably the most important policy document that you have. So so we want you to take the time that you need. I'm also going to give you an a paper copy of a comparison to last year's actual. So there'll be budget, there'll be actual from last year, and then there'll be budget and a variance. And on the back, there'll be a description of what we would, how we would explain the variances of what happened, okay? So, again, we want to invest the money in the way that you feel is best for your community. So we want any and all input. The other comment I would, only the last comment I would make is, we've made considerable changes to grants to organizations this year. We've introduced a new, uh, community hall grants, uh, feature. By doing so, we may have created a little confusion to the applicants, and maybe to councilors too. So so we want to be sure, like if you're if you're not happy with those explanations and how we dealt with that, we want to know. We want to be able to deal with this before we start doling out cash. We don't want to be in a situation where, you know, we're setting ourselves up to for a budget of, say, fifty-two thousand five hundred, and then at the last minute, council says, you know what, we should, we should, we should move that to a different number. Because then, of course, that changes all the work that you've done. So so it'd be important to know that early. If if you're happy with the way that we've done this, and I guess, you know, with the increase in the district community grants, that may have actually, uh, helped that situation if you felt like that didn't quite meet your needs. So I guess I'll I'll end it there, and I really strongly encourage anybody that wants to have a one-on-one conversation about the budget, you can ask any question you want. There is no stupid question. We we eat this stuff for breakfast, you don't, right? So we we recognize that, we want, we just want to be as comfortable as possible with the numbers and that they truly represent what you want to do in your communities. There is one final item that I wanted to note, is the Hipson Bridge consultation. The Hipson Bridge, uh, work, the engineering work, is included in this budget. And we'll be presenting a potential capital, uh, investment in the bridge, depending on what we find. So that was a consequence of bringing us.
So when are they supposed to be going, Sid?
It's like two weeks. It's like in weeks. So this budget anticipates that we'll be spending money in that area.
Counselor Surratt?
Yes, I I had, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a a good discussion with, online with Chris and Al on the forty-five thousand for for the, for the the halls in our communities, and I thought it was supposed to be a different line item. What I hadn't thought of, because I thought the forty-five thousand was a line item, and we still had sixty-seven or seventy thousand for the district community grants, but that forty-five should be aside. And he pointed out to me that the, since the halls are not in our regular grants organization, they should be taken out, and it just makes complete sense that that number should be taken out and put in the forty-five thousand, which leaves us to the fifty-two, and that was my question, and it was answered, and yeah, it makes a lot of sense. I'm glad you cleared it up for me, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Having heard none, I guess we'll move on to the next one. And seven E is capital investment plan and draft capital reserve budget.
Yeah, guess who? I I'm not gonna, certainly not going to spend nearly as much time on this at this point. What I'd like to point out is just a couple of things. I've included a copy of your gas tax priorities from the from the prior year. So that that's the driving document that that brings the capital reserve to to your attention. I've done a new presentation, because the province and ourselves wish to track the gas tax transactions separately from the regular budget. It gets confusing when I budget them all in one column. So what you'll see is the regular, what I call regular capital budget, which is the in the, I guess, what color is that, peach? And then the purple, blue is is the gas tax budget. So what this what this budget is contemplating is the following. It is contemplating, uh, on page two of the two-page document, it's contemplating, uh, the tracking field project. I'm ex, I I'm presenting to you an estimate of what you will probably be spending in the current year, knowing that we're not going to get all the way through that project. I estimated two hundred thousand. Look, at the end of the day, that could be one, it could be fifty thousand, it could be four dollars. It's really, you know, the the key here to understand is, whatever that number is, we're only a a section of it, we're only a portion of it, right? So everybody, all the partners pay their perspect, their proportion of that. The wind energy initiative, I'm very confident that you will be spending about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, that'll be the end of it. You've spent two hundred and thirty-seven thousand at the end of last year. This is would be the second component and should complete the capital project. Again, that's a hundred percent gas tax, as you know. There's a contemplated repair on School Street in West Publico, we weren't able to do that last year, carrying that forward into the current year. That would be paid four hundred percent by gas tax. There's a, there's a wastewater issue that needs to be repaired. So again, that will be gas tax that that's being contemplated for that. Wedgeport wastewater design and install, again, this is, this is, we're not sure what this number will be, and we're not sure how it will be funded. So in fact, where we're, what we're assuming is that gas tax will be used. But in fact, what we're hoping is that BCF is going to be used. And so depending on our funding, it'll depend how fast we spend that money. So that is a tentative number, but I wanted to put something in there to say, look, we're going to spend money on engineering. We know that, and we and we might get to the pilot project. And this pilot project, you know, assumes a certain number of of participants. So the the number is less important than the fact that we are budgeting and planning on doing that work. That's the more important piece that I'd like to convey. Actual numbers may vary. And I think if you want to look at how, you know, if you wanted to get more clarity as to how much it would actually cost us if the full project was done, we can give you that information, it's not really that clear in this document. We're also, I I I also, uh, was a bit presumptuous and and put an amount in for admin building. I figured that you were going to spend money one way or another. You've made a motion today to to move forward on that. I expect that we cannot construct a new building in the next fiscal year, but we can do a heck of a lot in terms of planning. So, again, that number is probably on the high side if we're only doing planning. But if we're if we're starting to 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 look at, uh, uh, partial construction during this year, that's not entirely impossible. That number, we contemplate a beginning of that work. Hipson Bridge improvements is included at ten thousand. We honestly don't know what that looks like, because we haven't had the assessment yet. That number could be different. The fact that we're committed to it this year is more, that's the important piece. And more than likely, the hardware-software amount was going to disappear, it's showing six thousand. We realize that that's actually in the operating fund, it's a duplicate, so that'll probably disappear. The the other item that I'll just send a warning around is the possibility that there would be additional capital requirements from the airport. And so I I haven't determined that number. So once once that number is determined, and there's a recommendation that comes up, I will then, you know, give you your options as to how you may fund that, choose to fund that, okay? So total, uh, total revenues, if you look at both, the gas tax and regular budget, it's about seven, I guess that would be, uh, almost eight hundred thousand dollars that will be spent this year, or is anticipated to be spent this year on capital. Now, a lot of that is non-hermene, a lot of that is funding from other sources. So, again, not looking for approval, just looking to give you basic information now. Take it, look at it, and then we have to set, uh, meeting dates to do this, to go to have another run through this.
All right, any more questions or any questions or comments? Thank you, CEO Muse, and move on to seven F, which is Courthouse Road. I think you got some new information today, maybe?
Yes. It's essentially an email, bringing the attention, the poor maintenance, so the condition of Courthouse Road, talking about potholes, and the fact that there's a lot of traffic on this road for a variety of reasons, including us. It describes some of the issues in a very detailed way. The the resident requested requested that we bring this to the attention of council, and that council make a motion to to forward this information to Department of Transportation and require a request that they look at this, at this road, Courthouse Road. So, um.
I would like to make a motion that we forward that letter to, uh, Transportation, just to see if there's anything they can do, vote it, at least they let them know that we're that there is a concern anyway, so make that motion.
I'll second this.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carry. Thank you. Move on to number eight, correspondence and for information. We have Ren Newsletter, recommended comments on the proposed changes to Pilling Code, Canada Legacy Society, series of law, four-year FCI summary. Anybody have any questions or?
I guess on eight C, it seems quite a loaded, I guess he's he's kind of asking the warden or ourselves to to send, or to to pack up what he's asking for on those, I guess those signage in the atlas and that's what he seems to be, I've read it, and he's to be asking if we can send, you know, information, see if they'll they'll move to change some of the stuff he's done, but that he's saying here, but I I don't know how, if this is totally all true, I'm not saying he he does not know what he's talking about, but you know, I haven't seen the signs of, has anybody, Mr. Warden, have you seen any of the signs yourself that he's speaking about here? I don't know if you'd have a response to that or?
Well.
Your opinion, maybe, Mr. Warden?
Canada Legacy Society, I I sit on that committee, and that's what it's all about. Wants to make sure that that we are represented. If if this project goes through, we can get the money from the government. Danny is alternate, and he can come into the meeting also. So we'll address some of these things at the committee.
Great, great. Anything else on the other three? Okay, haven't heard none, we'll go down to number nine, uh, there's no financial requests there at this time? Nope. Notice of motion, anybody have a notice of motion? Haven't heard none, question appeared, no questions. Uh, we'll go to twelve, in camera.
Motion to go in camera.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.